Good evening and welcome to the July 30th, 2025. I am Joe. Chair. The public is welcome to attend our meeting in person or via alternative public access provided on the Town of Yarmouth website. Our meetings are generally held on the first and third Wednesdays of the month, but additional meetings are added as when needed, such as this evening. I'll begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta.
Yeah.
Deirdre Gayquin.
Here.
Will Rubenstein. Jim Saban. Peter Slovac. Ken Smith.
Yeah.
Joanne Crowley here. Seeing that we have a form present, I will now call the meeting to order. We do not have a flag here.
Do not have a flag.
Um, we, we will omit the Pledge of Allegiance this evening and run right up into uh, the latest on the development of our local comprehensive.
Um. You guys all got a draft on Friday. Uh, I did go over it uh, with Joanne and have provided some red line edits to Jeff um, from myself going through it. Um, we also have some comments from town staff that have been incorporated into it. The only town uh, staff comment that I'd like to talk about, there's a bunch from Mary Wagon, the housing specialist, and a lot of them are unrelated to um, housing, but she did have a couple that were specifically in housing. I'd like to at some point during the evening, talk about those. Um, but I don't know, Jeff, if you want to just have me go through very briefly, some of the red line edits, and then I don't know whether you guys had any additional comments to talk about, but I don't want to make changes that you guys aren't familiar with what we've been doing.
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, hi Jeff.
Hi.
I didn't introduce you, Jeff Bag, our consultant, um, who's helping us on this. Good to see you again.
Yep, good to see you all. Thank you for having me virtually. Um, yeah, Kathy, we can do it either way. I have um, sort of the document ready. If I, I can't, I don't have permission to share my screen, so I, I don't know what the room setup is exactly there. If that'll be helpful um, to share a screen and just kind of walk through the red lines. Or if you want to do it in the room, either way.
Can you, uh, can you share now, or do you want me to share? I can share my screen.
Um, yep, it's, it's available now. Um, so I think just Kathy did a great job of summarizing that. We, you know, we've been working on this second draft for, for the committee. Um, the goal really hopefully is to get an okay to send this out for public comment. Um, Kathy and I spoke today too. Um, I feel like it's in really good shape. There are some important um, edits that Kathy and Joanne um, are providing in red line. But I think they're all, they're not like s- very substantive. There's nothing like earth chattering about the change with this draft, and I would just take one step back to the version you got on Fridays, that the, really the only thing in there that, that the board hasn't seen in some variation is the executive summary. And so it's really just pulled from the document in to kind of capture the essence of the plan for, for kind of the casual reader. Um, I prepared it. Heather reviewed it internally on our end, and then Kathy um, had a little bit of time to look at it. And so that's really the only thing that the board hasn't seen at all um, since the, since the last version. Um, and I think, you know, we had a request to change the image behind the cover, and so we're gonna work on that. Um, everything that we're about to walk through, um, we think that we can turn around basically tomorrow or Friday and have kind of this updated draft ready um, for the town to re- to release it um, for pub- for thirty day public comment period, whether that's Friday or Monday. Um, but we feel like we're in pretty good shape. We have a couple things to, to address based on everyone's comments. So I think with that, uh, uh, John, if you're okay, I'll, I'll start thumbing through. There's some things that are very minor, um, like uh, scrivener's type, you know, issues I will skim over very quickly, and then if there's anything that the board wants to talk about, maybe just interrupt me.
Sounds good.
Okay, so the table contents will get updated as we go. We'll do a final sweep. It's pretty automatic to update the table contents with the page numbers. Um, this is the list of figures. It looks fairly redlined, but really what um, Kathy and probably Joanne helped pick up on is that we embedded some photographs um, and those don't really need to be listed as a figure, so those will change to captions. And so there's a lot of red lines, but that's really the essence of this um, this page, the red lines here.
Can I interrupt for one second, Kathy? You can make it larger.
Oh. You'd have to, can you zoom in and make it a little bit larger?
Yes.
Oh, you know?
Better?
That's better. Thanks, John.
I, I know it might, you might lose the page, but i- if we could get it so we can read it. Uh, maybe I just need to sit closer. That's better. That's, that's good. That's.
Yeah, I think if there's something, I, I'll zoom in it where, where it makes sense. But yeah, the list of tables, um, there's a few tables embedded throughout the report, so we'll populate that list um, tomorrow. Um. So we did full formatting and we are happy with it. We think that it really helps kind of pull everything together. There's this added sentence, um, maybe it's a paragraph about um, just describing the consistency with the Cape Cod Commission Regional Policy Plan. Um, and Kathy and probably Joanne kind of helped kind of put that there. I think it's a good place to position it within the um, executive summary. It just really says throughout the LCP, there are references to um, the, the regional policy plans interconnected natural built-in community systems, and then the place types. We, we did this snapshot and we are gonna do the consistent consistency check on the summer population. Kathy and I spoke about this. There's, there's not an actual really great data source for the growth in the summer. So we're gonna, we're gonna go to sixty, we're gonna use sixty-five thousand plus, and we're gonna make sure that's consistent. It comes through, you know, the observations and it's, it's listed in one plan, the MVP plan kind of has that. There, there was two different references, so we're just gonna make that consistent here. Similarly with the median age.
I think it's fifty-five though. I don't think fifty-five was right. I guess that's my, was my concern. I don't think we're quite sixty yet.
I think it's fifty-five.
I think it's fifty-five. I, I think it was right here, but wrong in the housing section.
Okay.
Thank you, Deirdre.
Yeah, and Deirdre helps kind of corroborate some of, corroborate some of that. So yep, so with a, just a scrivener's error on my part, so we'll stick with fifty-five as the median um, age. Um, and then same, same idea. We had two, two numbers under open space, and we went back and forth, but really it's for about four thousand acres is the, the number we're gonna use for describing the amount of open space protected in the town. And so there was just two, two numbers in the document, and so we're gonna, we're gonna stick with the four thousand, which is kind of supported with the open space plan.
On that, on that, Jeff, I didn't mention this to Kathy, but is there any way you can throw a, a percentage on that in terms of total landmass for the town? How much is the four thousand? Is it ten percent? Cause we talk about acres and I forget the conversion of acres into, into like square miles. Um, but I don't know whether that might be helpful or not. Just to get a, just to get a sense of how.
Yeah, approximately X percent of the landmass.
Yeah, is protected. Yep, we can do that.
I mean, we don't, we don't need to do it necessarily for Friday, but so, at some point.
Okay. Yeah, with some of this, if, um, when we talk about some of the map changes, where we may make some minor changes to the maps and then come back a little bit later. If, if there's some issue with making that conversion, we'll skip it for now, but we'll revisit, but it, it should be a pretty straightforward um, calculation. So in this natural systems, there was just a, so, some capitalization and, and throughout the rest of this executive summary, we just added some periods to each of the bullets. Um, again, pretty straightforward. There's no, um, and here we, we had um, just taking out improvement, that's, the word snuck in there in terms of the capital budget process. So we have a lot of little things like that, but here um, just a minor word change. But then we're gonna switch out this photo. This is a great photo. We want to make sure it makes it in the plan. It's pretty representative of um, gathering in, in Yarmouth, but we have a townwide map and below it, we have where Yarmouth sits within the Cape Towns. It's a context map, and so we will insert that in here, and that was a recommendation we got. Um, I'm just gonna keep skimming through. I think there was one comment about the vision plan, just um, adding the terminology of um, Kathy, you may know this off the top of your head. It was uh, about just the phraseology, kind of a, there's a lead in sentence.
No, I think, I think my comment was not, not for Friday, but maybe having that first beginning part, the vision, the citizens of Yarmouth, have that be horizontal on the top and then just have the other ones. Um, I couldn't edit it because it was like a PDF.
Yeah, we made it as a graphic just so we could get the colors in there. Then the color was carried through from the, from the, from the vision plan itself, and that's the color we tried to carry through the whole document. Um, so here, this is the growth policy, which you have seen a draft of this, where the Cape Cod Commission had some re- some rec- some requests to um, acknowledge the place types, and I had tried to take these excerpts from the types that we talk about the most that, and I think Kathy and Joanne kind of um, proposed to remove these graphics from right here. Um, with, there's some minor word changes within this, um, but it's, it's not substantive. Uh, and I have one more thing to say about that, but I just wanted to show you what we're replacing it with is this one figure where the Cape Cod Commission has this embedded in the regional policy plan, which just kind of describes all, briefly describes all the place types. And so we're just gonna include this as a figure.
That's why it's clear it's their place types, not necessarily.
Yeah, it looked like we were weaving it in too much. So then just to go back, um, some minor word changes here, but what I wanted to point out was I got a comment about Matta Keys, and so where I thought it was an easy replace, find and replace all Matta Keys um, references with the middle school, adding the middle school. It doesn't work. I have to do this manually tomorrow. Um, just so it, it got kind of muddled through this, this version, and I'll fix that for tomorrow. But one of the examples is when you refer to Muck, the Matta Keys Utilization Committee, we, we need to just keep it Matta Keys. Um, and other references to the property, it can be called Matta Keys Middle School Property. And so I just got a little overzealous this afternoon doing a, a search and replace, and so I need to go back and just manually look for that, which I can do pretty easily.
I, I think there are only a couple of examples where the middle was missing, Jeff.
Yes.
There weren't that many, there weren't that many places.
That's fine. And I will revisit that. I thought the request was to, in, in any case, every case, change it, and I got a little overzealous. So here, just a simple word change at the top to introduce the community goals.
What, just so you, just Jeff, there's one goal there that changed, and it would need to be changed in that.
Okay, in the graphic.
I think it was the, was it the climate one? It's, it's shown later, but just making sure that it gets edited here.
Yep.
I edited it in the matrix, but I, this again is a PDF.
Yes.
Which one?
So I'll make a note of that.
We, we'll, we'll show it when we get to it later. It's the one that you wanted changed.
Oh.
Um, so again, real minor, just um, impacts from contaminants. So there's a lot of just small, and they're important. I'm not trying to minimize any of the um, suggestions we got, Phase One and beyond. And, and here's another point where um, tomorrow, where we refer to the wastewater project. Um, I, I'm pretty sure, Joanne, if I understood correctly, the, when we, when we refer to any of the phases, they're not to be capitalized. And so I'll go through, I was having an issue with Word this afternoon. It, it wouldn't find all of these and replace it with a lowercase. So if I understood the directive there, we, we don't need to capitalize Phase One. It'll just be a lowercase um, P in the word phase throughout.
So. I think in what, what I had suggested was, when it's a specific phase, it be capped.
Yeah.
But when you're generally referring to other phases, it be lowercase.
Okay.
So I think we refer to Phase One only in a couple of spots, and it is capitalized. Um. But then in a, in one or two spots, I think I identified.
Yeah, right under the cursor, this phase includes the treatment. Would that be lowercase?
We had capped a phase that we shouldn't have. Yeah.
Yep, I think you, that clarifies it, because I only got some real short notes as to what the, what the desire was. That makes more sense. We're calling it Phase One. The Phase One is the most.
I know it was, I know it wasn't very clear, but um, and it's, it just is a, a quick comment, Jeff. These, these kinds of changes for me um, are gonna be annoying for you and Kathy, but I think it represents uh, paying attention to detail, and we will have people reviewing this who are English teachers, and they will pick up on this and they'll say, hmm, not paying attention enough. So that's kind of, and I'm not an English, I'm never an English major, but I think grammatically, some of these things, as we go through it, we're gonna find some more, but in the end, we'll, we'll get them all right.
Yep, sounds good, and I appreciate the clarification on the phase, so that's fine. Um, have, uh, maintaining instead of having the simple.
Yeah, I did, it, that, that's just, I did talk to Lori Vasala, the water superintendent, and we had a whole conversation about the adequacy of our.
Um, each of. Do you have any?
Deirdre.
I'm gonna mute him, mute it. Um, I think I tried to mute her. I don't know. Um. The, the, the comment, the concerns that was, was coming about is our, is our withdrawal amounts. The DEP wanted to decrease it by three hundred thousand gallons per day, and that's where the concern about whether we had adequate drinking water for our um, future expansion. Right now, if we can continue with the withdrawal levels that we have now, we have sufficient amount for the uh, seven hundred fifty thousand gallon per day sewer allocation. So this is kind of maintaining adequate drinking water is kind of, and talking about the withdrawal permitting limits, because the permitting, I think, is on, been ongoing for a while and hasn't been resolved. Um, I did meet, uh, went to the Regional Policy Plan Public Hearing uh, today, and there was, you know, some talks about, you know, having the commission do something for the entire region, get a better understanding of all the withdrawals and all of our build outs, so that we can get a better handle on that, which I thought was a good idea. But that's where those edits came from, was from was from that conversation with Lori, and that's in these edits that you have here. All right, he's here.
I'd like to make a note that Deirdre Gayquin has arrived at.
In person.
In person. Five, five fifty-six, sorry, thank you.
Yep, and then, so that's very helpful that to, there was a couple uh, different sets of town, uh, town staff feedback that I think Kathy went away on vacation, and then everyone decided to email all their, but um, but it was very helpful. Um, here is a, there's a couple of examples like this, where just continuing to and add a little bit more detail and references to things that were just, you know, we're just still, everything, everyone's still working hard, so there's still stuff popping up, but just the um, the fact that higher, new staff was hired under that department was listed here. Um, we did have a quick discussion about the maps, and we're gonna, we, 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 we would like to keep them in um, this version, even if they're gonna change a little bit for, for readability, or, you know, there was a question about whether we want to have the aerial uh, photograph as the background or not. We feel like we could make those changes, but having them in the map, I mean, having them in this draft um, makes sense, because um, I think, you know, nine out of ten people are not gonna drill in on the map, but just to know that they're there as the placeholder, and then we can fine tune them as we um, go from this draft to the final. But there was a question about the readability of this, and so, so we'll look at it, but it is important that it's kind of wedged in there. Um, stormwater management regulations, and then just some fine tuning of the um, language here. And then where, where Run Pond is mentioned, we, we added the slash um, Crowle Pond. So this is the same example where I gotta go through tomorrow.
Yeah.
The, the find and replace tool is kind of nice sometimes, but I found out today that you can undo it very easily, so I have to go through and just make sure that we're cross checking that. But those are um, important but easy things to, to change as we go. Um, Oriental Bittersweet, you know, Oriental is the type of bittersweet, so it gets capitalized. Um, here, just, I think Kathy added just a clarification on the public water supply acres, and then this is where we have that other reference to the four thousand acres. And if I can, I will include that percentage calculation at the beginning. So for Parker's, Parker's River Landing, Kathy was um, able to provide an updated site plan, the, probably the final rendered version, whereas this is going online, so we'll update that tomorrow. Um, some minor change to this map. Um, Matta Keys is listed here as open space, and there's some uh, protected impertuity lines that I think we're gonna, we're gonna take out um, and just kind of listed as protected open space. So that should be a pretty minor map change that we can accomplish tomorrow. Um. Here, at the very top, this, I added in climate change vulnerability. Yes.
On page thirty-two, the, the map, uh, it's figure three point two, three two. The the heading says twenty fifty.
Yes, okay, yep.
Got that? Okay.
No, that's very good. Yeah, because we went back and forth. I changed the next paragraph to match the twenty seventy, and I forgot to check the figurehead, the figure listing. Very good. I appreciate it. It's helpful. Um, on this page, there was just the, 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 the first red line is climate change vulnerability assessment was just missing, so I, I, just adding that, well, it was supposed to be the document that's referred to in that first paragraph. And then this afternoon, I was really looking around. Kathy kind of asked about this um, second paragraph. It's, it's lined out currently. It talks, it's good data, but I, I could not source it. Um, this was in the original draft that we sent in December, and it talks about the percentage of shoreline that's eroding. Um, and then it's in percentages in that, that, that data, I just can't find it again anywhere. And so I'm not sure where we got it, and then the rate of um, erosion on Cape Cod Bay versus Dan Tucket Sound. Those numbers don't jive with what's in the climate vulnerability assessment. So I am proposing to just remove it for now, because we can't, I can't source it. I'm not really sure where it came from, to be honest. Um. If we can figure it out over the next month or two, we will, but right now I, I couldn't. I looked pretty hard for it, so um, we're just taking it out to be safe. Um, we had uh, some images in here that we are gonna take out. This was the, this was the um, the, the ship going through Lewis Bay, so it was just kind of filler. We, we use photographs and we want to use photographs throughout the, especially the fin- as we get to the final version to, to make it more attractive and, and viewable for people, but for, for now, we're gonna take out a couple. That's one of them. We're gonna remove for now. Um, just a simple fix to the um, figure heading here. Kathy and I did talk about this image. We'd like to keep it in for now. I think if you um, really examine the photo, we want to replace it, but we wanna, we wanna, I want, I really wanted to put a a good construction photo in to represent the built systems, but this one might, we might swap it out.
Yep.
Actually a water, a water main break, but we found it online, and it's, it's a good photo representative of what we want to put there. Um, really minor change on this page. Um. Again, very minor, just scrivener's error here. And then, so with this um, image from Union Studios, it's a great one. I, I picked the middle, the middle rendering to, to not overwhelm or underwhelm people, but I, um, I think Kathy or Joanne's suggestion is to move it, so that we have a place a little bit later on, when we're actually talking about the report, we'll move that graphic, so it just fits a little bit better. Um, the zoning map, one minor tweak we can do is make it more transparent. We're, we'll keep the aerial for now, but if we make the layers a little more transparent, we'll see through it better, and then just look at the colors. Um, some of the, the business districts, we can change the colors to just can contrast them a little bit more. So that's something that's pretty minor. We'll, we'll change for tomorrow, and if we want to revisit the, the nature of the maps, we'll do that.
It's just a re.
Yes, was that the repeated sentence?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, it, okay, great. Yep, so it's actually the same paragraph right under the recent actions. You stare at this thing long enough, and you start to not. Certain things.
We understand.
So this is another photo. We, we put it in as a placeholder, because we wanted to put a photo there, but we'll swap this one out with the Union Studios rendering, because it falls right under the, the mix analysis page. Um, here, we tried to insert our graphic for the Route twenty-eight, and the, the suggestion is to show it landscaped. Um, I just want to look at that a little bit more carefully, if it, if it really warrants changing from portrait to landscape for the whole page for this graphic or not. Um, but the point is well taken that unless you have um, magnifying glass, you can't really see the text in the bubble, so I'll look at that and we'll make a, we'll make a decision for the draft and then see what we want to do in the final version. Here's a, just an example where we're gonna, instead of at, listing a photo as a, a figure, we're just gonna caption it, but you know, having some photos throughout is really um, good, useful for people. Here, Kathy's adding some language about complete streets and safer to school, so it's just kind of adding some, some details.
And that is the agenda item that I couldn't remember for August sixth. I don't know if they mentioned that to you. Um, uh, Amanda would, just to update them, Amanda wants to come and um, present the complete streets policy to you guys and see if you could vote to support it. Cause they're moving forward with that at the next meeting, which is next.
Yeah, I think it's great. I think it's great to capture that stuff, because you as a town will be talking about it for a while, and it's good to embed it here when, when we know about it. Um, I think similarly here, just clarifying um, about the pre-twenty-five percent design phase and continuing to work with VHB and MASTOT, so it's just a clarification of the status of that, which I think is helpful. Um, here, we, we should swap out the rendering. We want to put in a rendering. There's a lot of effort that went in, but this one maybe we'll switch out with as suggested, kind of the, a signalized intersection, so I can do that from the source document, and I can change that tomorrow.
I can't read the screen well enough, but you did catch the miss.
Eye enough, yeah.
Yes, such a funny word in the name. Good catch.
We, we just put these in to see if you guys are paying attention.
Well, and we really are, but I, I appreciate what John said earlier. Um, and so this, just this bullet got struck.
One second, Jeff.
Yes.
One second. Um, and this is really for planning board members. Um, this is, as an example, this proposed roundabout, the photo that we, we, we know we're going to delete. These are the things that um, I really would like us to focus on, where we know that there's some huge sensitivity about that. And using that as a photograph, we just bring attention to something that hasn't happened yet, but that has already raised all sorts of questions in the community. Um, so if we could wear that hat as we look at it, um, e- even the, the language we use in action items, where we know some sensitivities, and we don't want the plan to get, you know, side, kind of side swiped by a whole group of people who start talking about the road, the round. Um, so anyway, my, uh, just to mention for the, for the, for the planning.
Yeah, appreciate that. Well, I think it'll really in itself at town meeting. You know, that's when you get a lot of people looking at all this stuff. Um, so just removing the, the issue about limited staff here.
Cause we hi- we got the grant to hire someone.
Right, yep. So minor changes here. Thought it would be good to show somebody at the transfer station where we can eliminate, it's, it's just it, you a filler and kind of, you know, but it's not necessary, so we're gonna take that out.
If you guys have any good photos that apply to a certain area, I mean, I'm gonna take August is gonna be my, let's take some photos of Yarmouth time. Um, but if you have anything, you know, feel free to send them, you know, some high resolution photographs or something to me. That'd be great. I got a bunch from the chamber, a bunch of links, and we, and we did provide those. Um, so I think we just need to be a little, take a little time to, to, to think of that. I think that pirate one up there came from the chamber.
Yeah.
From the Pirate Festival.
Yeah, I think the chamber photos were really helpful, but what I think I said this to Kathy is that they didn't, they didn't line up with the topical areas within the LCP, so there was a lot of great photo, like of the, the winter, like um, the Christmas stroll. Um, was cool, it was good photos, but they didn't really fit in here as good as, as we had hoped, but there's a couple that were really helpful. The crowds at the beach, you know, the co- the summer concert series and things like that. Um, and then I just, there's a couple of places where just some tidbits of information were added um, here, page fifty-six, and then um, similarly with uh, this references to the churches here. Minor, minor, but important. And with this map, we're gonna make a change. We pulled in some data from Mass Historic that may not be really helpful. This Thomas Farm Historic District is just one property. So we'll streamline this map a little bit, but we think that just illustrating those historic districts is it matches the narrative, matches the, the amount of information that we have in the LCP. There's a, there's a tons of resources available, but for the LCP, we're kind of just showing them briefly here.
And one, one question on the page, on page fifty-four, did you catch Banks Hallett?
Oh, Banks Hallett.
And did somebody?
Oh, it does say Banks. Yeah, go down to the next page.
Page fifty.
Down, go down. Right there, right above the churches. It says Banks Hallett House. It's Bangs Hallett.
Okay.
Somebody could be sent to the.
Oh, yeah, no.
Okay, that's very helpful.
And that the addition there on the churches, I thought was important, because in some cases, we've um. We've provided town money for the quick meeting house, for the South Methodist, South Heonic Methodist Church. Um, and so we added in the historic religious um. Structures.
It is a very iconic community character.
Yeah, they they really are, I mean. The, the six A Congregational Church is. They all.
Yep. It good, happy, happy to add stuff like that, I think. I think we'll be finding, you know, through the public comment period, we'll probably be adding some additional. Information, make the document even longer, but uh, that's the way it's gonna be, um, this, these two highlighted paragraphs were. Um, a little bit later in the economic development section, so they're not new text, but just moved around. And kind of looking at it, I think it, I think it makes sense, because what we've been using as the structure is. Introductory type information in the first section. And then, just a little bit, almost like bullets, a little bit more bulleted in the recent actions and just kind of hitting those topical areas, so. I have no issues, I think it makes sense to kind of move it up, the reader who might be skimming the document might see this.
Yeah.
Eh sooner, and not go farther. Um, so that came out, I think it came out at down here. And so we got some demographics, the the committee has seen, here's where it came out of. Um. The plane board saw this version, this is the same text that went to the Cape Cod Commission. So here, I think just kind of a minor shift around where we have the first recent action here is the wastewater management project. Oh, and here, I I can see this, I can see certain, uh, as you, as you look, here we say the word one. Um, but we refer it to it as phase with the the numeral one, so I might actually. Rectify that by making this phase one just a number, phase with the numeral one. Um. To to just match that previous section, and then what we're gonna do is take. This. Twenty eighteen reference, which is a little bit earlier, this is the economic uh study, and just move it up under that wastewater, so I'm just gonna relocate that, so. It's wastewater oriented, the first two items. Um. Here's a good example where. Matta Key's Middle School property is the right use of that um term. Where as opposed to anywhere where it mentions muck, that it'll just be Matta Keys. Uh. I think Kathy, I'm really on top of it, just kind of adding um this new law, um which extended the um opportunity zone. Just helpful.
I don't. I don't know how that impacts our actual opportunities, I didn't have enough time to research it, but we had a statement there saying that it might be extended and and it had been.
Yep. Um, I jumped a little bit to page sixty-nine, just some spacing, there's extra space here, so we'll fix that. Um, again, kind of just adding the. The communication assistant. Um, changing the override, um. Here, the youth substance awareness, just just instead of education information, uh.
They don't provide support groups, they just provide information.
Perfect, yep, and I appreciate that, it's a good change, and then here with the library building committee, just kind of really kind of getting up to speed. As the, they selected their preferred site at Simpkins Field, so that's that's just great to have. Here, just describing what CDVG is. Um, similarly, on this page, just talking about the eligibility period, so that's. We we talked about it with the Matta Keys Project, but it hadn't made it here yet, so that's great. Um, under recreation, the suggestion is to insert. Um, the uh, the map from the open space plan, so we can do that, it'll be included as a figure. We'll make it as large as we can fit there, and then it'll be just a figure reference. Um. Making a quick note about boating. It is is great with the moorings, permanent moorings, uh. Changing the date of Parker's River Landing Fall. And then, just identifying this new study, I think. Kathy, one thing I didn't catch earlier was, one thing I would like to maybe do is. Is there, do you know off the top of your head, is this information posted on a web page of the town yet, or?
The preliminary, the May version of the PowerPoint was, is on the muck. Um. I could probably put the July one on.
Only if it works, otherwise.
They're gonna have a. They're gonna have a final report, I believe, by um. The middle of August.
Okay, we'll flag it for the final version, like what we wanna do is bold it and make it a clickable link, but we can do that later.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, housing, just sort of wordsmithing here, and I appreciate it, like the the lined out. Sentence. Is kind of captured in the the text below. Um, this, this was the same, same text that went to the Cape Cod Commission and the housing draft. The, the the text that's highlighted came from the Housing Production Plan, and one of the early um comments we got was. Moving the Housing Production Plan discussion up and making it a little bit more prominent, it's the town's biggest housing document. And and I I Kathy said maybe remove it, but I do think that the. Those six bullets. Five, five bullets. Talk about some of the housing issues and constraints in a in a quick way. And I would, I would lobby to keep them in, because it kind of captures some of the key issues, but just in a slightly different set of circumstances. That it's it's from the Housing Production Plan, I think, and I think by eliminating the second sentence at the top. It reduces the repetitious nature of that.
I think that's fine, Jeff.
Okay.
Can can you just zoom that out a little bit more?
Yes.
Zoom in, zoom out.
Zoom out. No, make it bigger.
Zoom in.
Sorry.
Here.
Just kind of identifying who in our community has issues with housing.
So the bullets were in the plan that we got, it was just that intro paragraph, the plan clarifies. That many classes.
Yeah, but this was all already in there, it's just that the the line at the top, the high cost of housing and limited supply creates challenges that. I think it's rightfully like unnecessary, because that's the statement that's actually occurring below.
Right, it was just repetitive, something had to go.
Broke up that paragraph, okay.
Yeah, and then it.
Yep.
So, again, just a photo that we're gonna switch to caption. Here is where we have, we're getting that conflicting data, um.
I think it's fifty-five.
Yeah, so we'll stick with fifty-five. Um, I'll make that change.
I don't know exactly, I'd say approximately fifty-five, because I think it's fifty-five point two or something, but I don't know for sure.
Okay. Very good, and then.
Distical brewery.
Oh. That sixty. Interesting.
Yeah, that didn't seem.
Because I would have marketed.
Yeah, I know, I don't know.
True. Maybe I'll. If we're taking everything from the ACS, which is the twenty nineteen to twenty-three.
I can't believe it's sixty.
Census data for town, you have this fifty-five point five.
Yeah.
And which which sources that?
The US Census.
Yeah, I know, but there are a lot of.
If you could check that, that would be great.
I will.
But I I I hesitate to say sixty, it feels very old.
I thought it was fifty-five. Yeah.
For barely. Yeah.
The decennial number. And what we're using for most of this is the more recent. Uh, the five.
Third American.
Yeah, so. I know all of these numbers came from the ACS, because I checked it, and so I'm pretty sure it must be sixty.
Yeah, that's what seems wrong.
I thought it was fifty-five.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you could, if you can check that tomorrow, let us know, because it goes, whatever is right in the snapshot, but I wanna be sure that we're absolutely right, because we're gonna get asked about that, because that's higher than anybody thinks.
The trouble with those things is that they.
There's ninety different sources.
Yes, yes.
ACS has a big margins of error, you know, so that is part of the issue, but I will check this and make sure.
This is just the numbers of the number of housing units we have, and then the rentals and the ownership, they're off by one, I just don't know. How to fix it, so is it one ninety, or is it one four twenty-four, so, so I've asked Mary Wagon about about that. I'm also sent this section to Mary. Um, for her to see if she has any more recent actions that she'd like, significant actions that she'd like to highlight, although I did add some that I knew about based on our conversation, you may know some stuff too. That of of actions, I added some additional uh action items related to. Affordable, well, I'm assuming you get updated on the Affordable Housing Trust, because they did give some money for the four, the six forty-five Route twenty-eight. With the two commercials, units and eleven dwelling with four being. Uh, affordable, and then they're also working on a request for proposal that are really gonna highlight, again, mixed-use projects, and then also looking at those underutilized or gray field. Uh, properties along Route twenty-eight. And then I felt like. They spent so much time and effort on developing the housing recommendations for Matta Keys that. I I put it in here, I I hesitate a little bit, this is just because this is a standalone chapter, so I put it in there, but I don't necessarily. Want this to then draw us into having to provide it for. The economic development and all these other things, so I'm a little, I was a little back and forth on that. But housing is, it's almost like its own. Some chapter, but yeah. I. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I don't, I think you're right, I think we should be. Should be putting in as a, it looks like we're endorsing it somehow, or giving a preference, or. Giving it extra attention when they're supposed to be. The pool is supposed to sort of drag and neutral.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem taking it out, um. Because I I, there was some concern about that. Thoughts?
I'll take it. Yeah, I I think it it's um, it's not yet ready for prime time.
Okay. I'm, I have no problem.
So we're talking about this paragraph that's highlighted here?
Yeah.
Exactly.
It doesn't add anything to the report, frankly, it doesn't add anything.
Yep, they just spent so much time on that, I felt like this was a significant amount of work effort they've done, but yeah.
In there, Mary's very good at promoting a program, so.
Fair enough. All right, so we'll take that out. I'm good with that.
Great, very helpful. Just moving, moving right along here, um. Just removing town meeting to the recommended, recommendations area, some. Um, important but minor word changes here. Um. And then just adding drought changes, so these are all. Important, there's the field analysis. Um, streamlining some language to funding sources makes sense. And then this is that matrix that's within the capital facilities improvement. Um, section.
My only comment on this was trying to make. The. The description columns, I mean, some of the other columns can be smaller and having the funding and the description columns wider, so that they don't, doesn't go on for so many pages, because there's so little information on some of the pages, because. That column is so narrow.
Yeah, I think we could do it with the element on the left.
Yeah.
The timeframe and the height.
Yep, and maybe even the related LCP goals, you could take a look at that. Uh. Just, just to make it kind of not go on for so many pages, and also maybe this might be an easy way of having like a font of a, of eleven instead of twelve. The headings at eleven, but the verbiage inside's twelve, so maybe making that smaller. Uh, it's still would be very readable. Um, and then it's not the whole document, it's just the tables.
Yeah, and the only thing, you know, just being really sort of candid with with you all is, we have a little triage to do, because we. We we feel pretty comfortable while making the majority of these edits. For basically tomorrow or Friday, but i- if something like for reformat, re, excuse me, reformatting the table. You know, because I rely on Ochsah in our offices, the the expert on some of the graphics, and if if we can't do that for the draft, it will be. In the next version, but if we, if it's a simple fix, we'll do it. Um. It's similar to the maps, where some of the map changes that we might wanna talk about are gonna take a little bit more time than we have. Our our internal like workings is, you know, cyclical with all these. Variety of different proj- projects, um. Oh, okay, I see what happened with this ru- uh, the run pond just is bleeding over to the next page, so all. We'll look at that, but that's kind of just making that reference that pond there. I didn't catch that at first, um, so no other real changes to that, and then we're in the targeted action plan. Um.
Just just the one thing that, I mean, I reor- I reordered these. No one's commented on that. Um, like, for example, the Support the Water Resource Advisory Committee was number one, and I moved that down to the bottom. I made a managerial decision a little bit with regard to the order of things when we did the um implementation matrix. Okay. It's just no one, you know, in case anyone's like, what? Why is that in that order? It was, you know, it's just a little bit more, before it was just as it came into the brain. But now it was like a little bit more thought of what, what they are, not necessarily that they're in order of. Of preference per se, but they were specifically. Slightly changed around.
No, it's picking you, but is it Smugglers Beach still called Smugglers Beach?
Yeah, yeah.
It was Bass River Beach.
No, it went from Bass River to Smugglers.
It went back to Smugglers.
It was a Jim Saban request.
You're not referring to the Capitol.
No, no, I'm.
It's not targeting.
I I'm talking about the um action items in the matrix, yeah.
Noticed at some point that Smugglers had an apostrophe in one place and not in another, so if we notice that, we should.
Yeah, I don't know what it is. I just think we need to be consistent, and I think adding the apostrophe is just. Is a little extra, so I would probably leave it out. But I don't know, I should ask Joy.
I I spent some time looking at Smugglers, and there was another. Uh, there was another pond. That had the apostrophe, and and I went and looked as many documents as I could, and it was totally inconsistent. But it seemed to land on no apostrophe was just a little bit more official looking. Um. And I I'm hoping that that was consistent.
Yeah, no apostrophe, yeah.
No, and Dynas, Dynas does not. I don't think.
It's really inconsistent, there are documents that has it, have it, the apostrophe and some that don't, so. Um, I.
For XNAY and the apostrophe.
Um, on page one hundred, and it might have been one other place, but the numbers are all out of whack, so we'll fix that, and I, it's. It's mostly a carry on from the, from the previous page, but luckily it doesn't appear everywhere, um, just that, so far, just needed page one hundred.
That's our page ninety-four.
Um, so I'm moving.
Jumps from one to seven.
Uh huh, yeah. Yeah, I'm moving along pretty quick here, because these are important but kind of minor.
Can I? Can I just say, there were some minor changes to some of these action items based on comments from. Uh, like for Brittany, for example, number three, she asked that it's that of develop a list, you know, prioritize. And I thought that was a great suggestion, um. And she also. Suggested that, you know, since number seven is really being taken care of in item number three, can we get rid of that extra action item? And I I I would recommend getting rid of that.
Which one are we on now?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're on um. The goals would, I don't know, the. Thank you.
Page one oh five.
No, they're not one oh five.
Oh.
I didn't print this out for them, sorry.
And in the, in what's three on here, again, the um word track is spelled as tracks, it should be T R A C P S.
Yeah, you did say that, yeah. You said that before.
It it pops up sometimes, I think, you know, these things happen.
It's probably written that way in the open space correctly.
Probably, it probably is.
But just wanted to let you know that that that's kind of why that that changed. It's a slight modification there.
So we're moving on, right along, um, as Kathy said, I I relied on any changes that she made as your town planner incorporated them. Um, I jumped all the way to page one twelve, so this is climate mitigation and energy. Um, this is the one Kathy that you were saying changed.
The gold.
The gold change, so.
Very much.
Yep. And we can update that graphic. Um, ca- again, just kind of. Changing some, you know, continue implementation to implement. Um, support the education and outreach rather than continue, so just important but minor, flip, moving some of the words around here. Uh. Businesses instead of uses, so pretty minor changes in this area, and here's where. Um. That Matta Keys, I'll fix that tomorrow, Matta Key should just remain, it was already Matta Keys Middle School, so I didn't catch that. Um, minor edit to goal number three here.
Let's not forget to talk about Mary's, I don't wanna do it now, but talk about Mary's suggestions.
Yep, so I think that comes up in the. In the matrix, I think was a good spot to do that, so here. We did provide. A public engagement summary, which was much more comprehensive, it had sort of findings and some of the themes. Um, but for this purpose, we're we're linking, I I'm providing a link to the vision plan. And um Kathy added some important kind of like text here about the. And Kathy added some important kind of like text here about the extensive nature of the. Of the um, the outreach and consultation with town officials and then. Kind of providing that detailed summary of the open house. That's what we're relying on through this whole document is where there's a more robust document, we're linking to it. So that, this was just, this was just, we, we want to include a, a short. Chapter on the public engagement, a couple photos, and then. Adding the topics on this page, and then the last thing I did, um, after the fact, after the draft was sent on Friday, I realized that. We wanted to include a reference to the crowdsourced map. Overall, as after we closed it, we got eighty eight, um, different pieces of feedback and information here, so just capturing it. Quickly here, the, the remainder of it is in that more comprehensive document, but I did want to reference the crowdsourced map. So that's really the only change to, to what you're have in the version on Friday. Kathy picked up on the dates here, which is very helpful because I think they shifted around.
Added the ones that we're doing, we're gonna be doing too, even though they haven't happened yet.
Perfect, and then here. This, the. Plan board dates and then the public hearing will, will remain blank in this draft. Um, we should talk about that at some point, but that is coming up, and now we're in the matrix, and so. Um, the Cape Cod Commission had asked for some. Um, reference to continuous progress updates, and so Kathy provided some language I think was really helpful. It's just kind of the lead in. It's just a couple, two sentences about, about that. Um, to, to kind of meet what the commission had asked for, and then. Kathy, around here under housing. Is. Okay, there, there was this one talking point on, on page one thirty eight under Action Seven. This was the one that you were proposing to strike.
Yes.
And so if, if the plan board's okay, that will strike, we'll strike that here, and then the housing. Action items here is where we made the change based on Mary's comments.
No, I don't think we did. I didn't make any changes to the housing. Did you make?
Oh, she had, we had, you had provided something to me. It was very minor. She, there was a screen.
Oh, she, oh yeah, she added some funding.
Yes, maybe that's.
Those I did incorporate because they're just additional information, but she did have two additional. Action items that we need to talk about.
Okay, do you want to do that now? Because we're at the action items here and I don't know if this is a good place.
I think if you finish this, then I can pull up and, and we can look.
Oh, yeah, and here on this page, actually, that it's just the minor changes that are highlighted under the funding column, so I, I forgot this, so that's redlined. Just the Housing Trust and some CPA references, and I think with that. We are.
Then we're gonna, the only good thing is eventually we'll add the, this is the abbreviations for the funding sources, but we'll also have one for the partners.
And that's here, it's uh, funding sources and then partners. It's just. We didn't have one of them listed in the first, in the draft they sent to you on Friday, and I just crunched them together. It, the, you can't tell that the page format changed back to portrait. Just to kind of save a, save a page or two here. So with that, those are the changes that are new since Friday.
It is a lot. It's been fun. I, I'm just gonna share. Oh, hopefully I can find. I don't know if that's the right one. So she was, she was suggesting just noting that within an annual production goal of sixty two affordable units. Uh, with a priority for rentals. I don't have a problem adding that, that in. She, I put, I had, we had with a priority for rental units, but she was saying she wanted to put in the annual production goal in the actions. We talk about it in the actual housing thing, but.
I was gonna say the priority should be.
I, I don't, I think this is, this is more of like the type of, was it homeownership or, or rental units? She, she talks about mixed use later, and I, I think number eight is an interesting one because they're working on this now. The Housing Trust is working.
And then it says with a priority for mixed use.
This is what the Housing Trust is working on right now, so I don't have a problem including number eight. And then she did a nice job of giving the timeframe, the funding sources, and then the responsible party, so. I, if you guys are okay with that, I think we should add number eight. Um, and I do like her comment, number seven, services and counseling.
Yeah.
So, so far, I, I'm fine with adding those. Number nine is develop and, and implement workforce housing programs with a priority for municipal employees. And then see the sound services action item number two. We've been trying not to duplicate. Things, and I think we've already mentioned it in action item number two, um, so I guess I'd be less inclined to add number nine. Is that? So, so is that clear, Jeff? Making the changes on this page through eight?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind sending that to me, I don't, I don't, I could have missed it, but I don't think I have that, but if I, if I have that text, I can, we can add that tomorrow, that's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I, I sent it out to everybody, and I think I copied you this afternoon. It was later, yeah.
Okay, great.
And she has a bunch of other. You know. I put that at front, just, she has a lot of other potential action items related to other areas. And I think I'd like to prefer to include those as review comments as part of the public review, because they're outside. This is like her public comments, so to speak. They're, they're interesting, but they're not something that we can process. Before Friday, yes, yeah.
Really consult the other people that are more responsible.
Yeah, yeah.
So it makes sense.
And some of them are also duplicates, so I, I think we, we were trying really good, um, not, not to do that.
Jeff, can I just ask you one question? Could you go back to the, the section on the libraries? I think it was back from page sixty seven or sixty eight.
I am, I, I, I'm having a hard time hearing Susan. I don't know if that was directed at me.
Library section, I think it was on page sixty seven or sixty eight.
Oh, to go back to that, yes.
Yeah. The problems when not exist, I just couldn't find what you said about the libraries. I just wanted to hear one more comment.
In, in what way? Like, in, under Town Services?
No, it was on the major body of the book. It's our sixty seven.
Yeah, that'll be later for you. Okay, it's in Town Services, you're in the right spot. Sixty seven.
Okay, here we go. Thank you. I am, I just, I can't hear Susan for some.
I did add some language there.
Okay, could you go over that again?
Yeah, it, it, so basically it talks about the library building project in that they went before the select board on June seventeenth. Where the Simpkins Field Site was chosen as the preferred site for a new library, although there were strong interests expressed and also continuing operation of the West Yarmouth Library. I, I, I knew, I knew you'd want that in there. Yeah. It's, it's, it's a red line edit that I just read, that's only. I, I'll send you guys, I can send you guys. I sent it to you, I didn't send it to everyone. You're special. I just wanted you to be aware of all the comments I'm sending to. Yes, and yeah, he's got it, yep.
And then Jeff on his glossary. This is like your rain's karma thing. The first time that a phrase is used, that you're gonna. Then these initials, you just spell it out the very first to make sure you spell it out and then put the three initials, so that people know. Right away.
He has like CDBG, I wrote out community development block grant, yeah.
And we, I talked with Kathy briefly about this, I think between now and Friday, we're not gonna be able to pull off the glossary, but I think that's something we can chip away at. As we go from this draft for the public release to the final, it's just, it is labor intensive because I, I, there's just gonna be so many words to. To include, we can't do it between now and Friday, but we will do that, and I appreciate what Susan's saying about the first time it's used, have the, the total. Uh, word reference, and then from there on out, it can be kind of abbreviated, so that makes, that makes sense.
Yeah, at the very end of the document, they do have a glossary for funding sources, and that's pretty good. I looked it down, that seems fine. It was the other, the body of the book, because people read it, there's a lot of acronyms.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's just, I think even Mark Forrest mentioned that, uh, the glossary, you know, eventually, so, because not everyone's gonna know. With some of these things, like accretion, I mean, people may not know what that means, like, so, if it's any slightly technical. But, but, but Jeff's right, it's gonna take a little bit of effort to figure out what are the, what are the right terms to include in the glossary and. And people need to, you know, what do you assume are the basic information too that people should know, so.
Can, can we talk of, did you have something else Kathy wanted to cover on this? Uh, Jeff, while we have you, I don't want to keep you too much longer, but I do have a general comment. I'd like to get a sense of the board. With regard to the matrix. I, I finally went through the matrix today. And as I view a matrix, the matrix is meant to be kind of a very ten thousand foot flyover, capture the. Twenty, the fifteen words that describe something, put it in a column and let it go. It shouldn't be a repetitive. Description of what the action item is in the narrative. It doesn't need to be. And I think we've got a lot of repetition in the matrix, and I think of a matrix as being kind of like an Excel spreadsheet. Where you get the main points. So I'll give you an example. Under natural systems, water resources, we just say action two. Identify, and I added, and obtain permits for additional affluent discharge locations to meet build out demands. That's it. Evaluate, action three, evaluate locations for future phases of the wastewater program. You don't need, we don't need to consider, all of that other language is in the narrative. And there's a lot of room that we can save with eliminating that descriptive stuff. By just capturing the main idea.
This is already significantly reduced from what, and I had gone through and tried to reduce it. I don't disagree. And sometimes there was a case where, oh, if I needed to do two lines anyway, because I needed two lines for something else, I was probably more descriptive. But yeah.
Why don't I do this? I have gone through this. I'm gonna give it to Kathy. And Kathy will see what's, what's good and what's bad. We don't need to do this for Friday, because action items are gonna change.
No, they're not.
But it's just, uh, uh, the, the thought that I, I think we could compress this matrix. Because the full, the full discussion is in the narrative. And it's even identified as action number one, under the goal of water resources and wastewater management. I, I just think we could.
Yeah.
Make it a crisper.
Yeah.
A crisper document.
I think I only, I think I only cut out eight pages, so I think we can cut out.
It might, might, we might get one more out of this. Or maybe two, two or three.
But like I say, if it's a case where I need the, we're doing the lines anyway. That was part of, there was a logic to that. Yeah, I'm like, it, because I did, I was like, oh, I could erase that, I'm like, oh, but it doesn't make, save me anything.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, um, anything else for, for Jeff?
I think only maybe we could talk a little bit about the schedule before he goes.
Sure.
Um, so I think we're in good shape for having it available on Friday, and I'm gonna start. Doing the publicity on Friday. I'm gonna tack on the library stuff too, because they have a meeting on August thirteenth as well. And then we'll have it through September first. Uh, we have a planning board meeting. Multiple times. I think it's gonna be a function of. What type of comments are we getting? How elaborate are the comments? And if they're not, you know, we can check as we have meetings in between. Um, but September third, I think would be the first time we would have the whole thing. I'm a little concerned about having the um. Public hearing on the seventeenth, if we don't really know how many comments we're gonna have, so I'm really leaning more towards the October first meeting. For the public hearing. I just, I just, we were trying to do it and it's always been so stressful. It would be nice not to, to be able to do the, and then, you know, a thoughtful review and, and, and all of that stuff to make sure that we're getting the final product that we all want.
The final deadline, when is the ultimate, what's the final draft deadline?
Well, Oc- October twenty first is when the warrant closes. Um, and it would be nice to have, that's our final version. You know. Yeah, um, but the, the article is not going to, it's just going to say, adopt the. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not gonna, um, it's not gonna get into any great detail. I think the first makes it more durable or something. The word, you know, I mean, if we wanted to push it earlier, it would be like a weird meeting like the twenty fourth or something. But we also need to throw in a zoning public hearing as well, and that might be something we could do on the seventeenth. Does that work for you, Jeff, or?
Yes, I will double check. I think it does. If you just give me one moment. I'll make sure my calendar has that. You had said October first, right? That's a Wednesday.
That's right.
Yep.
That, that's fine. I, I know that I can attend. I, I don't know about Heather, but you know, that's, I think that's okay, so I'll mark that on my calendar as a whole for now.
I'm, I'm misunderstanding then. The public hearing you're suggesting be on what date?
October first.
October first, and then the twenty first of October.
Is, at some point, we need to go before the select board. Uh, the twenty first is the last, they meet on the seventh of October, and they meet on the twenty first of October, and the twenty first is when they close the warrant.
Okay.
For, um.
So that's when, that's the, that's when we would go before the board.
I, I would, I would like to make it the twenty first if we could, yeah. Because I think the library's going on the seventh. Of October.
Okay.
Uh, but that presentation to the board, that's very high level, that's almost a summary presentation. You've been through this before. We're not gonna go through this page by page by page.
No, no, I think, um.
But it'll be more of a, because they're aware, and you did a wonderful job the last time going through this.
Yeah, you want to truncate it from last time, because we haven't made a significant number of changes.
I mean, I would just, I'd do like a summary document, uh, and maybe pull out a couple of examples.
Yeah.
I, I do have a, I do have a question though. Uh, between August first and September first, the document is out for public review. They'll be sending comments to you.
They'll be sending comments to the else, the LCP at yarmouth dot ma dot US.
Starting September second. When do we, when do we, at the next meeting, we start reviewing comments? And, and thinking about changes?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have two meetings in September.
I would, yeah, like on the Friday before, I'm just gonna take all of the comments that I have. I mean, I can even send them to you, everyone in batches, I don't know. Jeff and I haven't talked about this. So you can see, see them earlier.
I'm just wondering what. Hearing, yeah, for the public hearing, we would have a new draft.
Yes, that incorporates. If necessary.
I mean, I can't imagine someone coming up with a suggestion that we have not thought.
Or, or it'll be, or it'll be a few things, or it'll be a correction, or it'll be some. But I think in the meantime, we should be working on, um, you know. Making it, some of the comments that we talked about, making it, you know, the aesthetics of it and, and those, the maps and all that kind of stuff. BSC Group can still be working on in. You know, in August, just to getting those things done, so that when we, when we get all the comments, we're kind of ready to rock and roll.
Yeah.
Um, the, the thing is, is, um, for the public hearing. You know, we'd like to have the draft available for people to review. Couple weeks ahead.
That's right, so it would be mid September.
Right, so Sep- September seventeenth would be our, like, our final edit, so that then it would be available for people.
Something coming up with a topic that we haven't covered, and I can't imagine that, it could be more technical like dates, timeframes. But no, we talk, I can't imagine them coming up with G, didn't talk about X.
The other thing I think is just pulling people back to, the, the goal here is to get a certified local comprehensive plan. And these are the things that need to be included in a comprehensive plan. We've added even more.
Right.
But, you know, I mean, we could add more and more and more and more, but we, what we really are doing. But, you know, I mean, we could add more and more and more and more, but we, what we really are doing is concentrating on the things that came out of the visioning and, and addressing those items.
That's, I guess that's my fear is that there will be some really mu- small things that, not my fear, but um, uh, my, my, my interest in asking this question is that someone will want to identify something really small and say, how come that's not an action item?
Yeah.
Um, and so, you know, I want new paving on Willow Street.
Yeah.
Exactly. So those are the ones I think, yeah, we have to filter out.
Yes, exactly.
In that process, we would be doing at, at, in a, in a kind of a lump sum mode after September 1st? Okay. All right. Yeah. All right. So that filtering process. Okay, got it.
And that's a legitimate, I want my road paved. But, and, and that, that's, that's always gonna be on the table, but does not necessarily have to be in a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plans that is.
Well, that's part of the capital plan, you know? I mean, we do that on, on a regular basis.
There's a plan every year.
Exactly. Exactly. And we have that road stabilization fund and they're increasing that.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm wondering, I'm trying to
You are, but that's the.
Project, what, what, what might be the comments that come in?
I think you're gonna have a lot of. Like that. I think it's gonna figure out what's comprehensive and what's somebody's opinion. Cause that's gonna be the difference.
And that, even though it may not fit in the comprehensive plan, it fits in some plan and it kind of.
Yeah, it's being ignored. It's just not part of the list.
Yeah, this is, we have recognition involved. We have a certification involved. Uh, there are certain things that are required that we've addressed. And when you say we've abandoned other things that over the course of at least three years, we're gonna have popped up as major issues that need to be addressed. So that's.
Stuff's gonna happen two years from now. We haven't even thought of yet because we didn't think COVID was gonna happen. Nobody thought of that.
So we could have a bad storm. We could have a bad storm and, and.
This plan's gonna change.
A couple of things in there will be, building to be elevated because it's something that has to be fixed immediately that we thought we could be done in five years. But we have a base, we have a basic document from which we can now work.
Yeah. And it's, it's a living document too. I mean, today and 10 years from today are not the same. We need amendments. All right. So does that make sense, Jeff, for the schedule?
Yep. I think it's great.
All right, all right.
Jeff, we appreciate your work. This is fantastic.
Yeah, thanks. I feel like we're over a milestone here and it's been a very good collaborative, um, process. So it's, I consider us all a, a big team. So um, thanks everybody for, for looking at the hundred and whatever, 57 pages that it is.
Hey, hey, I'm gonna be honest.
For all the work, truly.
Yeah, really. Thank you so much.
This is 155 pages, but you have to understand the current LCP is three binders.
Correct, yes.
So this is amazing.
Yep.
Oh, amazing.
Yeah. So, good, good job.
Yep, no, you too. Thank you. So I will have a document for you probably mid, middle of the day tomorrow. And then, you know, as we talked about, I can, I can help facilitate that as needed. I'm gonna be off on Friday, but, um, we should, we should be able to get through these edits. They're pretty straightforward. So.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, great. Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
I almost leave the meeting. No, I can't leave the meeting. I'm used to zoom, uh, teaming and zooming with him and just, okay, we're done. Bye. No, we're in a planning board meeting, Kathy.
So anything else on?
No, I think.
On our agenda again is the systematic use update.
Um, yeah, they had their, um, community workshop meeting on, um, the 15th of July. Uh, and BSC group is working on compiling the information, um, to the facilitated questions that were a- asked and answered. And then also, um, the bubble diagram exercise that people did, and they're gonna be summarizing that. Uh, and also, um, catalysts. Uh, their, the architects sub to them, um, had, has done a preliminary report on some of the costs of different types of redevelopment of the building. And they're going to be presenting that as well on the August 11th meeting to the MUC.
People want to stick the show.
Yeah, they, they should. I mean, yeah. Yeah. And the other thing is there's no escalation, you know, the 2025 dollar, dollars. We know we're not gonna be doing this in 2025. Uh, and then it yeah, well, also like Parker's River Landing is any example, everything just keeps going up and up and up. So. Um, so that the, so that, yeah, the set, the 15th was a great workshop, and then they're gonna be summarizing it and presenting it to the MUC on their August 11th meeting.
Okay. Um, I guess we'll move on. No meeting minutes, right? Any committee updates?
The library committee needed, that Monday night. We, we're chugging along. Um, there, uh, we're doing a lot of the survey work over at the site. Um, identified a couple of problems that Kathy was able to solve one almost immediately with the, uh, access road. We have a need for depressed access road because that's the only way in and out of the site, right? You can't, that, that was.
The mall main, yeah.
Uh, but.
Meaning the pressure should, yeah.
They do the electrical work. They do electrical. They're on time. They're on, they're on time. Thank God. They're on time. And they're working very hard. They came up with three potential, now, maybe they were talking to the library group, which is, you know, well versed on what's going on. Um, and they came up with three potential locations on the site. And we're all on our heads and all that looks straight. And then Mac Forrest says, hey, wait a minute. Um, you have to remember who you're gonna be talking to. To some people, this is gonna come as a total surprise to them. They're gonna be driving down Route 28 and all of a sudden they're not gonna see the school. So he said, you need to dial it back a little and, and really pay attention to the fact that the, for most of these people that are gonna be hearing about this project, cause we're having a public meeting too. You, you have to start at step one. Um, and then, then you can say, here's the site, you can go here, but here are the pros and cons of this location, pros and cons of this location, the pros and cons of this location. One of the recommendations is they close out the end of one row. Um, that's a huge change for a lot of people. Massive change. And they're gonna connect it back to Route 28, they were the, at the, at the other entrance, you know, the other little curb fighter.
Crossing my driveway.
We talked about the fire trucks, make that curb, you know, in Route 28. Um, absolutely no parking at the, at the, uh, the residence because they're vigilant about that. So how do we work that into the plan? So some of the practical considerations all of a sudden are being discussed in, in, you know, in real particular terms. Um, so, but they are getting ready. They're very conscious. They're gonna do a really good job. Uh, they're gonna have some storyboards. Um, I don't know if we're gonna have any handouts at this point. I thought they might, if we had the three locations, that might be passed up. And then Mac said, he probably oughta dial it back a little, make sure that the people that are hearing this hear this as a site with no preconceived notions whatsoever. Because we had already divided the site for the library and then the rest of it would be for the, uh, like more like the common concept. So you could have the festivals and things like, Max said, you know. Before that, you gotta tell people where you are at the very beginning. We are sort of a two or three steps ahead of the population at this point. Like I said, you gotta dial it back so they understand exactly what's going on.
So they're not gonna present any of those options?
Uh, they may, you may talk about that. I think they ought to, but Mark, you know, for some people, we have to, here's the site, you know, the problems with the site. There's really two sites that comprise the entire, you know, uh, potential site. Um, it can go anyplace on this part of land. There are pros and cons with each, and maybe that's when they could introduce the, the, where, where they wanna put the library.
I thought the architect did an excellent job. They're very good of explaining. They, they looked at many different options. They explained why they didn't like each option and then why they were gravitating to the option that they came up with, which I thought was very thoughtful.
They do sightlines and how it's gonna look toward the town hall, how it's gonna.
It was good.
Uh, but again, they're talking to a group that has been through this before. He's, and, and, and Mac is right. He said, a lot of people are, this is gonna be the first time they ever heard about this. Um, and we have to be very conscious of, you know, we don't take anything for granted. We don't give them any idea that there's been a preconceived decision about this is where it has to go, because this is where the architect thinks it has to go. We have to walk them through the process. This is where we started and here's where we are. And then I think they could introduce, once they say, here's the huge site, you looked at all of the potential, we could put it on this side. It's too close to the residence. You could put it at the end, but it's too far, too far away from Route 28. You could put it for 28, but then you.
You're blocking the.
But you take, you take the concept, the common off from the 28 and you put it in the center. So those are the things we looked at. And then from that, filtered it down to dividing the site. And they got a weaker portion. There are three locations. Here are the concepts. It's one location, but the, the buildings are configured differently at the same location. And it's on the eastern side, we, we of the site, because then you'd be looking toward the common. The potential, and then to the right hand side will be town hall.
And you can still, you know, it still has a presence on Route 28. You can see it from Route 28.
So is, is, is any, is any of this online, the presentation by the?
Not yet. No.
Probably just the video of the meeting. And, and it was, he zoomed it in, so you probably see it very good.
The location, they, they have preferred location. The architects prefer locations, the eastern side of the site.
Makes sense.
But, and this, they're talking about having like a little reading garden there.
But the McCarthy School would be raised.
No, no, no. It stays.
Terrific.
It stays.
So the front of the library would face the McCarthy School?
No, the other way, face the common. It would face, face the common. Um, and, um, but the way they cite the, where this, basically there's a core building and then the adult wing and then the children's wing. How they fashion that, like, three different designs. Uh, but the location's the same. Right? I mean, that's now, they, they hear from the, uh, who knows what the public's gonna say, but you know, the concept was it's too far back on the site. You know, even though there's a library there, you drive over 28. It's too far forward on the site. You then have the, the new common town, not visible from 28, cause library blocks it. So then they moved to the one side of the, the line, uh, is a residential, uh, community. The decision was that's never gonna work. And therefore you, it actually has turned out, you said, the site was the best site, was the best area on the site. Uh, and it's huge. They say, so their, their recommendation is they sort of like do a group of trees or some sort of, uh, vegetation to, to really uh, identify the library and then the rest of it is gonna be the problem. Uh, so it, it's, you know, they get very good ideas.
They did. I was, I was happy. Very, very thoughtful. And sometimes too much is too much, cause it's like a huge site. I'd, I'd like bait, break it all up. So.
Yeah, that, and that, that's down, cause it was 26. But then we can, they've counted, you know, so many spaces for public meetings, so many spaces for four person meetings, so many spaces for six person meetings.
I think the public would be very interested in those types of things.
Yeah, because I think there's gonna be a lot of conversation about the other 20.
Yeah.
Because they have a lot of space in that field. And that was a huge debate, as you know, at the school.
Right.
It was the size of the other 20. Because the cost is gonna range somewhere between $800 and $1,000 a square foot. Library is expensive. Not because they're visually, you know, dazzling, although it's still beautiful. It's still loading.
It is. It's all a single story.
We have that very clear. That does not include furniture, pictures or equipment that's gonna add to the cost of the project. Uh, that came up in the minutes. We talked about that two weeks ago. Uh, make sure that people understand there's construction costs and the total project cost.
Did any of the FFD come out of the old library or no?
I don't know, because then we would start talking about that in ways that had those of everyone on West Chandler. Because they wanna make sure that the West Chandler.
Not talking to the Southern.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I don't know. Uh, but it's, it's, it's complex. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult. It's gonna be a hard sell. Uh, any year that, uh, if you talk to the water resources people, uh, sole focus on be paying for that water, that, 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 because the statute of obligation to do it. We've got the school coming up, um, school over here needs attention. Uh, you get all these competing interests.
So, so much money to go around.
There's only so much money to go around. And it's Tracy said, the first night they made their presentation. She said, I don't think this thing coming out with two libraries, you know, we're sort of chugging along where we are. A lot of people are gonna say that. Um, yeah. So it's, it's, it's gonna be a tough one. It will be a tough, none of these major capital projects are easy because it's, it's, it's people's pocket. There's just no way you can avoid it. And the, the, the more detailed, the more honest we can be in our presentation. The chief is, we, you know, the chief selling point for this is we get the state money. Uh, but it doesn't cover everything.
What's the percentage?
It ranges from 35 to 50, but they have even 50. It's mostly closer to 35%. So 35% of 26, we only is about, it's about 13,000. It ranges between nine and 13,000. That's not a lot. And, and that doesn't include furnitures, fixtures or equipment.
What's the conversation about donations that you have to?
Oh, yeah, that's another, I.
I didn't, that was the first time I heard of that. I'm like, that's a lot of money.
There's a requirement. And the, this is the, you know, when I talked about probably using other people's money.
They have rules.
It was, Tom said, Tom Pendleton, he was the vice chair, said, is it requiring in the performance itself? That the town raised money, that we do like a fundraising activity and raise money for the project itself. It doesn't say how much. He was gonna research it and find out what, if it was a percentage.
He said, yeah.
Little bake sale.
You're not gonna make the kind of money they want. He said 10% or something. That's what I said. It can't be 10%. It can't be 10%.
I don't know what.
Sound a lot of cookies, let me tell you.
You're, you're starting other, you know.
But Tom was gonna in, uh, investigate that and come back to the committee next week. But he said, no, it's right there. You've got to, it's kind of like, you know, everyone's got skin on the game.
Yeah.
You got your skin on the game. And then the, the, um, Matt, the architect said, yes, he remembers they did that at the least.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said, that's right. They had to raise money. And they set up a foundation.
Right.
And then they did the fundraising through the foundation. So I guess it's, I guess it is a requirement.
Friends of the South Yarmouth Library and the friends of the West Yarmouth, gonna be, how, how's your cookie bacon skills?
Just start selling them now, not giving them away.
It could be a 40% or a certain percentage, like, who knows what it is, but he's coming back to the committee next week.
I bet you can reach out to Keith Stan, they'd probably tell you.
Tom, I think was gonna do that research. And there's another community that Matt mentioned that did something that he was familiar with. So.
He said, he can do the project, but he was aware of the fact we had to lose.
Yeah, he was gonna provide some information.
Key point was, the first time anyone in the committee had heard that, we all went, what? Yeah. So that's, uh, yeah.
Sure. My only update on capital budget is we're starting our meetings next week and I don't know when they'll end, but.
Wow, next week.
They start, yeah, the first real meetings next week.
So who's, who's sponsoring that?
Sandy.
Oh, okay. It's, it's the committee chair.
It's the committee.
But it's.
I don't know. That's a great question. Don't have a good answer for you, but we're gonna go rogue. So we're gonna get it done.
You guys are such a fine tuned machine, right?
Still need some help from downstairs, you know, coordinating all the department. That's really the.
Calendaring. And scheduling everybody. It is.
Kathy, Amy, I took you in replacing with this car.
Yes, they, they, they're going to be presenting someone. I think they talked about it, Amy. No, I'm sorry. I'm not gonna get the name right, but she's the assistant town administrator in Franklin, Massachusetts. Um, they're gonna be, um, introducing her on the, on the 12th, August 12th. And we're gonna be there for our presentation. And I think she's gonna start in November.
Oh.
So she's, right. So she, so there's that. And I think there's some, um, also some leads with regard to, uh, Karen Green's position. Uh, and so they're gonna be mentioning that, uh, at August 12th meeting as well. Um, but that's a department head position, so they need to be interviewed by the select board. They make the decision. Division heads, like, and, and even the assistant town administrator. The town administrator makes the decision. There's like a certain review period. Same thing with the, um, I guess they also hired a, a new library director.
Yes.
Oh, Jane has already got a replacement.
Yeah. It's not from within.
It is.
Yeah.
That was great.
Yeah.
It's like someone running into traffic to get them titanium. Which position is that? I like Gary, cause that's.
You're not gonna allow them, sorry.
Well, thank you for the.
Yeah. Um, any other committee? Uh, none for me. No, no, I, yeah. Um, and uh, Will will have some rack news for us, I'm sure, when we, when we meet, uh, next time. I did have one board member, item Kathy, you mentioned that you went to the meeting today.
Yes.
The Cape Cod Commission. I was gonna try to attend a Zoom tomorrow.
Um, did you, did you go to the subregional one?
No, these are the ones that were, there were two today.
Yes, yes, yes. Um, yeah, I, it was exactly, they really didn't make any, I just wanted to go to make sure they didn't make any significant changes to like the goals and objectives from the, from the subregional meetings that I had gone to. And it's pretty much, um, ve- very similar. But there was a couple of people there who had done an excellent job. They weren't from Yarmouth, but they were from other communities. They weren't from Yarmouth, but they were from other communities of looking at the two thousand eighteen, looking at the actual full draft. They have a full draft online of the twenty twenty-five version and, and comparing them and talking about different things. So the people's comments were the most interesting part of it. You know, one gentleman was an environmental engineer and was like, you know, we, they keep saying that we're not gonna have any increased, um, you know, traffic and impacts from these bridges, these new bridges, canal bridges, but, you know, what's the, what's the increase in congestion that gets impacted later as you get down, uh, in, in those types of things? And just like there was no, uh, originally they had some performance benchmarking that they were doing in the two thousand eighteen, and that's not in the two thousand twenty-five version, uh, just some very thoughtful comments about, um, a- all the different things about, um, like the whole aquifer and how, you know, we need to be looking at that as a, at a more regional basis, as I mentioned, uh, for withdrawals and what kind of demands that we have, and maybe the commission should be doing, you know, helping communities with their build-out. I think most people already have done their build-out because if most people, most towns have their comprehensive wastewater management plan, which that's a part of it. Um, so, so I found those two people's, or three people's comments the most interesting part, because the rest of it was just perfunctory. I did ask, um, Chloe whether they had a redline version of the changes. Um, she said that they really, she was gonna look into it for me, because just the goals and objectives, because I asked her, go, how is that gonna be impacting us? We were halfway down. And she goes, I don't think it's going to have any significant impacts to you at all, but let me double check and then
The place types and all that stuff are still
I think the, like, some of the wording on the place types changed a little bit, like the net, one of the guys commented on the natural systems wording, took out some stuff. Um, but I, I don't think it's gonna have, have impacts us. And I said, there's no, like, grace period? You can't, we've been working on this for so long. You can't, you can't. I think they're gonna be very kind and generous to us. I don't think it's, they're gonna be the problem.
Um, uh, any correspondence or staff updates for us? Uh, you just gave us some staff.
Yeah, I think, I think that's it. Oh, there you go. Amy, yeah, Frugia Letti.
Quite the resume.
Yeah, I think, I think she's, um, she's more of a traditional, uh, assistant town administrator versus, I think Bill was a little bit of an anomaly with his very, very strong economic development background. Um, so I'm kind of hoping that they, the person that goes in Karen's position has a strong economic development, so kind of balancing all of those things.
Chief of Staff from Massachusetts State Senate. State Senate, the new assistant
Town Administrator.
Two thousand nine, two thousand ten, so. Wells, Assistant Town, Town Director.
Nice town.
Little more money than us, but that's, yeah. It's a beautiful town.
Yeah.
Uh, meeting schedule, Ken.
Yes, um, I'm gonna go to the police night out, gonna hawk the fact that our LCP is out for thirty days. That's next Tuesday. Next Tuesday night.
What time?
Uh, I'm gonna say five thirty. You're on, you're on the emails with Diana Wells, aren't you? Yeah, I thought you were hot, hot and heavy in that. I think it's five thirty.
And it's over at the
It's at that DPW highway? Yeah, pretty sure. Yeah, they, they had it there last year.
Yeah.
And it worked out really well, so I think they're gonna continue to do that.
Maybe the library building committee should be, I
We talked, I talked about that. They have a brochure and I said, if you give me some brochures, I will have a whole planning table and I'll do something on the muck. And we'll kind of let, let people know the, maybe I'll mention the hazard mitigation plan. Remember that?
I do.
Yeah.
I do.
Uh, so that's something we still
When do they give you a table?
I just bring a card table.
Maybe I'll turn to you. Tuesday, they don't have a library.
I don't think you have a li, when's the next library meeting?
It's turned out to business.
No, that's a
That's your, it's, it's, we, they try to meet every, twice a week for the next six weeks or something. I have to look, because they change a couple. They change a couple.
Well, the thirteenth
They're in their hard deadline.
Yeah, I thought you were meeting on the seventh, August seventh, Thursday. Yeah. Um, because the thirteenth is when they're dead, given So, and you'd probably not want to meet the Monday before to prep for that, so. Um, but yeah, you guys are, you're a well-oiled machine of a committee.
Okay.
I have faith in you guys.
So that's over with DPWs.
Yeah, I can, I can find the, the, um, email from Diana. Okay, no emails, not even one that just tells you the basics. I have a carrier pigeon, right? So our next meeting is, is, is August sixth, um, which is next week. I think we need to get back to talking about some of those minor edits that we had talked about with regard to the zoning, so that's gonna be on there. Amanda's gonna be on there for the complete streets. Um, and then, you know, we can talk a little bit about, um, prepping for the August twelfth select board presentation, where we're gonna talk about both. Um, I think
Do we have to use zones changes?
On the twelfth.
What if we didn't touch the zone?
Oh, I think we have to.
Yeah, but what if we didn't?
We didn't touch what?
We, we're supposed to be doing two, we're, we're looking at two zoning changes. Um, and I just wanted, you know, one of them was the, was for the fisherman, that was for the, for the boats. Um, both of them are gonna be controversial, not controversial in the sense that people are reading, you know, pitchforks, but they are precedent setting. I, so I'd like to spend a lot of time with the board talking, but I, I think I suggested my book already.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, you did, but I have not.
But
My email boxes
What if you didn't do anything? What if the planning board just decided to take a pass on the zone and
Pitchforks should be out after us in the other direction.
Well, but both of them are solvable.
Oh, I don't disagree with
Although, I mean, no one's gonna get hurt if we don't do anything. I just don't, we wanna do something that's worse than what's up there.
Yeah, no, I, Susan, I understood exactly where you're coming from.
I mean, the fisherman can, the fisherman thing is, it
If the part of the, the, it's working now, the part you gotta keep in mind is the spot that he's selling his lobster on today is at some point gonna be a pump station.
I, I agree, but it's not gonna happen next year.
Yeah, on that corner.
Yeah.
No, I didn't think you needed it.
I thought we did.
No.
No.
No, way back, yes.
Way back.
But not now.
But it's, it's temporary. I agree, but you know, it, it's temporary, but nothing's gonna happen in the next twenty-four months.
Mm-hmm.
So
I agree with that.
The, the more pressing one is the voting one. Because there's a cohort of people in, in town that own boats that have driveways that are circular. And they can't pack their boats there, and they can't, they, they get, they get, you know, ticketed by, that's the more pressing. Uh, and I think that's actually solvable. Um, the boat, the, the lobster guy, as you know, I'm not in favor of designers knowing at all. I think it's precedent setting. I don't think it's something we shouldn't be doing.
I think if it's written properly, this won't be precedent setting, since he's the only guy dealing with it. And I think that's the part we gotta take into consideration.
Yeah.
Is that how we write this piece of zoning allows him to do it, if he's the last guy in town doing it, he's been doing it since nineteen fifty-six, from my understanding, right? If you go back to his dad, I think how we write it is important.
Yeah.
That we don't set designer zoning, so that anybody, I wanna sell transmissions out of my driveway.
Didn't do it for me. That's what I want to avoid.
Mm-hmm.
Because he is, he's been doing it on that lot, but prior to zoning even existing, that's, that's to my defense.
And according to you know, Yarmouth folklore, it was never an accepted use of the property. There was never any, any, selling fish in your home was never allowed.
But the, the part, and I don't wanna get into a big debate tonight about it, but the part that I look at it as, Susan, is it's okay to sell tomatoes out of your driveway?
I agree.
So what makes you sell tomatoes out of your driveway?
I agree. Maybe someone should have done this twenty-five years ago.
I agree.
But, but the fact is, we're confronted with that now, and it's a one-person problem.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I stopped the other day, uh, I was walking to the post office. He was there setting up a sign on this fight, come here. Great, they're having a great son. They're having a good, because the location is fabulous.
Yeah.
He said, my sister drove by Friday at noon, she said, the cars are parked up west Yarmouth.
I watched this from two times.
There's no hardship there. So I'm not, I'm not as concerned about who was saying about the guy with the boat. Um, because that is a real hardship.
I, I think we need to present something at Fall Town Meeting and do the best we can to make it language, uh, that is com- is comfortable to as many people as possible and let the voters decide.
Yeah, that's the big thing, is you gotta remember, is whatever we present, we're not making the final decision.
Yeah, you're right. How, how that, how the fishing one is drafted is critical.
I think it's huge.
It has to be, it has to be a one-off. And yet, yet we don't want it to be spartan.
I was gonna say, it, it's almost like I question whether you want it to be a one-off. Either we're going to say we embrace our agricultural and our fishing communities and we're willing to let people sell what they catch, which isn't gonna be a ton, and you have to get a commercial fishing license, you gotta get a commercial retail license. There's a lot of work that goes into that. Uh-oh.
This is what I'm hearing from my neighbors. Um, I had a community meeting last week, but both these items are, the very first thing on zoning was, on the front was, oh, good, you're gonna restrict the more, because it's adding in. I said, no, as a matter of fact, one notion is we're gonna double the opportunity to pack their boats now with this. Um, if I, I'm
Then come to town meeting.
But, but it, but, but, so I'm, you know, I'm the champion of the residential community. This is yet another assault on residential communities. We already have, uh, a zoning arrangement, they've worked from home and they have, you know, that's one assault. You've got childcare centers, which we cannot control at all, that's state mandated, you're out of luck. They wanna put a childcare center next to Julian's house, it's going.
Mm-hmm.
And they wanna put up a chain link fence next to Julian's house, it's going. So that's another assault. We have ADUs, third assault. In fact, the question came up about the boats, are ADUs gonna be allowed to have boats? I didn't know the answer.
What is that?
There is one right now.
If, if you have an ADU, can they have, can they, can they store a boat?
It's a legal address, yes.
Yeah. So, so, so they could have one at the back of the house, uh, uh, under the new, one of the proposals, they could have one also on the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
So you have a residential community, you have the main house, backyard, driveway, ADU, that's on a residential community, you could, you could, all boats stored all into
I think we had talked about, I have to go back and re-watch that meeting, because so much has happened to that meeting.
I think the part that, I know that Peter and I, 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 I was in favor of it only season. As a former, as a former boat owner, I gotta tell you, and I had gotten cited by our former building commissioner while I was working on my boat for having it in my driveway.
Yeah.
And he was very receptive to the fact, this is, look, I'm rebuilding the engines on it.
Yeah.
They won't be hit permanently. He was okay with it.
Yeah.
But my point of it is, is that seasonally, it was a pain in the neck. I was gonna say something else, to squeeze it beside the side of my house.
And maybe that's something we should, you know, the, the board should talk about. The other thing we mentioned was, um,
I think that's the way the
Length of verse maybe can restrict even.
That's what I
And then, anything that's stored there has got to belong to the guy that owns there.
Oh, without question. I think that absolutely
You've had some great comments from the last meeting that I need to incorporate in, and we'll talk about it next week.
Yeah, I, I, I believe it absolutely has to be.
This, this, this is a really good conversation, but it's three members of the board aren't with us. Um, and I'd really, I'd really like to engage when they're all here, and maybe they'll watch, which will be good.
Yeah, it'll spur them.
But I, I will encourage them to
That's the, yeah, those are the, those are the, you know, the practical implications of
I, I hear you. And we're gonna have an opportunity to talk about this next week. And for weeks after that, um, when we engage. When were we thinking of the public hearing? With that, Kathy? For the amendments.
Yeah.
I, I, I know you Well, we can talk about it next week.
I guess it's like, um,
I said September seventeenth.
That's nice.
That's what we had talked about, September seventeenth. I think we would it could be a very busy meeting, though, because we'd have to have the hearing first, and then any final tweaks or whatever on the LCP to go out the next day. Yeah. Uh, in order to, to get that going, so but the October first, it should just be the, the LCP. I don't think we should be combining that in any way, shape or form.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, I guess then it's, do you wanna have an extra meeting of any type?
Well, if we're having a discussion on zoning Carmen's next meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Could we do it the first minute September?
If we think we're
Think we're ready.
Yeah, I mean, we have to be, I, I just need to be, um,
That would be September third.
So I'm just I'm just trying to figure out when I would need to get the advertisement into the paper. Yeah, so it'd be like, I need to get it to the paper like on August fourteenth. So we would really only have one meeting to talk about it.
It's hard to talk about it.
Um, it's just
I think she was
Who's gonna be here?
I won't be here the la, I'm, I'm away the last week of August.
Okay, so the August twentieth meeting, you wouldn't be
No, I'll be here for that one, but I'm going to Sunday to Saturday to meet.
Oh, good.
Yes.[1723.86]